It's ten o'clock, we're going to open up our March twenty first nineteen record session. People please silence or shut off their cell phones and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Melanie, our agenda is full of additions, deletions, and others this time.
Yes, sir. I would like to table something that I have on there, which is a possible backup internet provider. I'm going to meet with the committee and get their input and more accurate cost assessment. Potentially with their seventeen ISP addresses, it's a little more complicated than I initially thought. And then you'll also need a special JGS connection and we'll need to figure out what's...
There's a lot more to it.
There's a lot more to it, yeah. So I will bring that back when I have some more concrete information for you guys.
Okay.
And then we have another deletion, the Dog Lake Forest Service contract. That was also, that was my error, I didn't realize that was just Kevin's update. So I took that off. I added drought declaration and I have that put together for you guys. We have an addition of Fair Board Committee Member, Red Rock Surface Weaver and Non-Disturbance Agreement. Darwin said he was going to be here for Planning Commission Recommendation, but he's ill, so that is a deletion. He will bring that to us at later time. I have chip seal contract, herbicide award.
Perfect. All right, so thank you and welcome, everybody. So our first order of business is public comment. Is there any public?
Yes, I have some that I'd like to wait till after all the agenda at the end is covered with the yellow tape. Because you have decent discussions.
We're going to be, we're going to be at eleven o'clock, we'll be going into an executive session and we'll be coming back out in the public session, so that's a timed thing that I have to be in, so...
I can work around that. That's all right, because it takes some...
You want to do, you want to do it after that?
Yeah, whatever's convenient. Rather than do it after, whichever we can fit it in, other than right now.
Okay. You good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So moving right on down, Promisronia Bill, get her out of here right away. We have a recommendation coming from the Fair Board to the Board of Commissioners. The Fair Board makes a recommendation for appointment of a Fair Board member. So if you have a recommendation, Promisronia.
Oh, did you hand it out?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I wrote a letter and everything. I'm sorry, I wanted one to get. Our meeting last night, at the board meeting last night, we, we, they, the board unanimously voted to move Buddy Ness's request to be on the Fair Board to pay you guys this morning for appointment and approval.
Okay.
So I did bring a letter.
That's exactly what you were directed to do.
I don't, I can't.
This way it'll go into the official record, part of the official record, huh?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation from the Fair Board to appoint Buddy Ness to the Fair Board, the vacant position.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Buddy Ness to the Fair Board position. According to the Fair Board bylaws for what a return, this is to replace the resignation of Park Stevens.
And it just happens to be a brand-new term.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Melanie, would you put together a letter to Buddy, the Board of Commissioners appreciation that he's willing to step up and be on the Fair Board? Appreciate that. Thank you very much, Promisronia. Did you have any updates or anything, Paul, we got you as a Fair Board, or are you good to go?
I mean, I can always update. I can always update. Restroom update really quick is we're just about ready for our actual mechanical final, which is all the heaters and all that kind of stuff and the partitions and blah, blah, blah. And I think Kenny will be out there today. And then we're just waiting to pour the sidewalks and then we can get the final final and that'll be done, done, done. At the Fair Board meeting last night, we met with the sales committee and what came out of that, I just wanted to open up conversations about the barns and scales and that kind of stuff. And what came out of that was really awesome because now it's kind of a, we're all going to get together and do a walkthrough and they can see projects that they want to get done, that their kids can get done as community service for the 4H and FFA, which I think will be really nice and it will clean up a lot of stuff. So that was a plus. The lighting situation, we have, the grant is, deadline is April first. We have twelve left to do in the grandstands. And we can get the end ones, I'm not sure about the crow's nest ones because it's so muddy. I don't think we can get the lift truck out there, so I'm going to check on that. And that would be five, and then otherwise, everything is going to be done.
Good.
And we, since the kitchen was gutted, that was, it was kind of cool. Anyway, we went ahead, I talked to the health inspector and asked about the tiles because they were twenty-five years old and really in ratty condition. So since everything was gutted, I thought it was a great idea to redo the floor. And he suggested an epoxy floor. It all just came together, it's all epoxy. It's, it's really cool. We had extra product and since it's pretty spindy, we, on the spur of the moment, did the office, we did the storeroom, we did the two foyers. But now it makes the paint job inside the building look pretty ratty. So that'll be next on the list. But, so a lot of little things finally coming together and almost done. I just talked to James this morning. Starting next week, he'll be on the entrance for three days a week and two days on regular things. So that hopefully will be done within a month.
Very good.
And so...
I just want the Commissioner to get a chance to go down and see the epoxy floors. That the process is pretty, pretty easy, actually.
Yeah.
And it's really very clean, cemented floors work pretty well. We're, I'm going to be watching to see how they hold up after a year, whatever. It might be an avenue for our facilities manager to look at and some of our issues throughout cement floors within the county operations, you know?
Well, is this a product that works on walkways too, the sealer?
Yes, it's a double epoxy.
Outside, it's a very slick finish, so I don't know if you can put a rough finish for like a...
They do have, they do have deep aditives that you can do for...
Yeah, it is.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you just jumped in there?
Yeah, no, that, I didn't know that part of it, so...
Because I had him, I actually had the same guy come up at our jails. If we can redo the floors up there without one silver again and get sealed and... This stuff that they're going to use is a little bit different from what they use. It's a little more expensive, but it has more of a sealer epoxy on it.
Well, I think a real place is the foyer coming into the main building will be used quite a bit and the office will be used daily, so we'll see if it flakes or if it holds up.
Well, now the office, we didn't get to sand first. And remember, it had that gray and red...
But that's true, if it sticks to that, maybe wasn't prepped fully because of, we just had extra product.
Right.
And it sticks to that, that'd be a good sign.
That's right, that's right. He says it's atomic, nothing's going to break, nothing's going to chip, nothing's going to sprain, so we'll see.
That's amazing.
We'll see. Thank you for that paper. So we're going to move right on down through here. Unless you have more, I'm sorry, did you have a minute?
No, no, I was just wondering if something interesting was coming up.
Okay. So... I guess I'll just start right at the top, Red Rock Surface Weaver and Non-Disturbance Agreement. I want to hold off until we have legal counsel on the phone later on that to make sure. Working with legal counsel and working with Red Rock, make sure that's all done appropriately by the right agreement. So from there, let's just go right down to the chip seal contract. Or that's what I have up here at the top. Not in order at the bottom. So I'm going to retract that back, let's go to the order at the bottom, drought declaration.
You've been doing a lot of the research.
Yeah, I'm hitting all over the place. Yesterday, we had a follow-up meeting. We thought that maybe the water master is going to be here today, but maybe...
His intention was to be.
Pardon me?
I think his intention was to be. He was going out to Avery Place first.
He said Avery Place? So, so he's not able to make it?
I'm assuming so.
Okay, so you're good to go, you had a discussion. Yesterday, we had water master here, there's been a discussion about doing the drought declaration. We held that off for a couple weeks to see what the spring weather was going to do. There's some very positives reported to us, but we're still way down on most all the snowpack. So Melanie worked with legal counsel, with the water master, with Mr. Shown, I believe, and we have a resolution before us. Entertained that most.
So I'll make a motion, we approve in the matter of Declaration of Global Disaster and a Request to Declare State Drought Emergency for Lake County Resolution Number Two Thousand Eighteen dash O Two.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve Resolution Two Thousand Eighteen dash Zero Two presented. Any further discussion?
As I said yesterday, I'll be a smart aleck, but I would just assume the governor doesn't come to Lake County with her entourage to sign this. I don't think we have enough votes to concur about it, concur.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So Melanie will need to sign that and I think there's people that, and things you have to notify, send that assigned. So thank you for that. Oh, our sixth solar transfer, that is not an action item if I remember correctly. That was an update yesterday from Dave, it's an administrative thing. That has all been approved through a previous owner. This is just an update, ownership has changed and it's transferred ownership. Do I remember the presentation yesterday correct?
Yes.
Okay. Lake County Resources Initiative Action Consideration. Mr. Alvin not able to attend yesterday, we had quite a discussion. We've been contributing out of video lottery dollars for several years now, fifteen thousand dollars a year in support of the component economic development there. What I would like to consider today, myself, have a little bit of discussion, is a commitment to put that in the budget, but it's not announced until it goes through the full budget process.
Yeah.
So you, we can do that just by concurring that it will be...
It will be included in Melanie's lottery fund budget.
Okay.
As a line item, for consideration.
For consideration to the budget process.
Yeah.
Okay, I concur. So Melanie, make sure you have that transfer in there and through the budget process on the video lottery funds, we will...
So it won't be a transfer though, Lord Commissioner? It'll just be a line item as it is in the current budget?
Well, I'll let Melanie work with the budget officer. I know, when I go through the, the budgets aren't going to be submitted till the ninth, but they're sort of a lumped amount that could go towards projects, I think this one's individually should be...
Okay, I thought we had else here, I have my own line item, but we don't.
Do we?
Yes.
Okay, I'd say keep it that same, yeah, okay. Yeah, just keep it there. Thank you on that. AOC dues action, we had a lot of discussion yesterday about that. I, myself, need no more discussion. If you have any more to bring to that, Commissioner Shown?
No, my update is a little bit later that you received a phone call and I'm on it last night and this morning about related to the primary function, or one of the primary functions of the federal lands subcommittee requiring dues payments. I think it will write the point completely on as to why we do not participate in. On that assessment that we can use here, forty-six, four thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars here in the county instead of sending it to another committee that represents the same issue that is represented by multiple entities. I talked to a friend of mine, Commissioner, third county, it's been a while. They contribute to this effort, not to AOC, but through their associations and through their subgroups and to nature. And it's just out of control, and so, yes, I think it's appropriate that we do not have that.
Okay, so I take that in a motion, sir?
Yes. I'll make a motion that we reduce our amount of our overall annual assessment that runs from January one to December thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen to our association, Oregon Counties, by four thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty cents.
I'll second your motion. Motion's been made and seconded to basically not fund the federal lands management subcommittee dues as a voluntary due. It's not a mandatory duty.
Well, and for the record, since we're just kind of saying it that way, we are still a part of the federal lands subcommittee more, or group. It's a subset for the record of public lands, which we're a fully vested member of. It's just a, a working group, you might say, in some respects. So we're, we're still completely involved in all of those things.
Motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So Melanie, you can go ahead and pay that invoice. Mr. Berman, sir, Backup Generator Action Consideration.
Well, yesterday, I come to you guys with this backup generator, backup power system for the courthouse. I took that for the amount of eighty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. I did my follow-up that you guys asked me to with counsel, legal counsel. And we solicited bids and we fulfilled the requirements that we needed for these bids, so even though I only got one bid, I reached out to others and I only got, received one bill, one, I solicited that, which I did. And then he also looked at the contract, the contract looked good, he said, move forward. Only thing I got to do is, once you guys approve, I got to get ahold of Summit Power Systems and talk with them on a time, and we give them a ninety-day appreciation date on that and make sure he's okay with that, and then I'll bring the contract to you guys to sign the contract.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the bid to Summit Power Systems for the backup generator system for all of the courthouse that will power the whole courthouse in the event of an emergency.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to award the backup generator quote bid to Summit Power Systems. Further discussion? Dave, thank you. This is pretty close to half of anything, close to what you've been able to refine. You've done a lot of work on this. This has been carried forward budget-wise. The Budget Committee, the Board of Commissioners have been wanting to get this done for at least five years. The cost had just kept us from being able to do it. Your persistence on working on this and getting it down to a cost that's acceptable, thank you.
Well, Commissioner, even though, when you say five years, ever since I've been in office this last twelve, the discussion has been annual, that we need this system, we need this system. Specifically for the jail, if the power goes out, we have to do this huge move.
It's very inconvenient.
Well, just there alone, let alone the other inconveniences of business being shut down, whether it could be in the courtroom, an active trial going on, that has to be shut down. It's, it's, I'm glad we were able to get to this point, thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have ninety days. All right, Dog Lake Crushing Contract Action Consideration. I'll let you take a little bit of overview on that. Mr. Kim?
Okay, Kevin came before us yesterday and went over the bits that he had received for the crushing contract on completion, the second phase of the Dog Lake Road Rehabilitation Project. He's recommending an award to the low bidder. There's, the caveat there is that it will be Kevin, it will be part of the construction and he will provide, under the base bid, crop production, stockpiling at the source that's been designed or been designated. And he will also deliver and stockpile the other material to the Lake County yard as part of the bid. It's a hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. This will ultimately be covered as part of our grant.
So your motion was to accept that hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and forty dollars for part of the construction? I will second that. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item is Chip Seal Contract.
Yeah, and Kevin also went over that yesterday. And he's recommending an award of Chip Seal Oil to Idaho Asphalt. They are the low bidder for the chip seal oil they're going to be needing for all of the projects that are designated for chip sealing this year.
The motion, sir?
Yes.
Sorry. Second motion, the made and seconded to award the chip seal oil bid to Idaho Asphalt, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Herbicide bid award, which is also from the department?
Yep, same, same type of thing. They go out for bids for the herbicide and the apparent low bidder is Timberland Division. And they're recommending an award to Timberland Division in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-five cents. I will make a motion that we approve that.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to award the bid, herbicide bid, at twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-five cents to Crop Production Services. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're already done, Fair Board Committee Member, the Red Rock, legal coun, make sure legal counsel has got everything in mind on that.
Yeah.
Planning Commission Recommendation is tabled into Darwin's back door. May use on that page, is there any for today? Oh, I'm sorry, Melanie raised her hand, but I missed.
Disaster Recovery Plan, your name?
Disaster?
Approval?
Did I miss it on?
Oh, yes.
Please.
Where did I miss it?
Right after Backup Generator Discussion, you jumped into Dog Lake Crushing Contract.
Oh, sorry.
Good catch. We're going to keep you on for another week, Mel. Let me get to that piece of paper here. So our IT contract people we've met with, I'll let Melanie, being she's our IT contract manager, get a little bit over to you and we'll go from there.
So ACTEC is recommended that be formed, I believe, IT Disaster Recovery Plans, being remined with Commissioner Shown's advice. We would form a committee that represents all of the departments here in the county. So in the event of a disaster such as flood or earthquake, that we're not functional, we can pick ourselves up and get back to business without being down for instance in the period of time. And so no talks, formal talks have taken place yet, but I have spoken to the people I'd like on my team and they're all concurrence. So with your approval, we'll get started on that.
Do you want to run through that list for...
And I, before you do, I had a thought, is I think it's an open list. I think you're going to have people that you need on the list, but as you get this team together, you might find out that you're missing somebody, so...
Yeah.
My recommendation today and thought is, is to approve for her, to put the team together and whoever that needs to be for her, pull that team together.
Okay.
What do you, I know, I did have this discussion yesterday because I didn't think of it. I was trying to get everything covered, but I think as it materializes and she works with our contractor, we may miss some, some people.
Yeah, I don't worry.
Well, I can, I can go over who we're thinking of now.
Yeah, that's fine, I just want to make sure we leave it open so that you don't have to come back to the Board of Commissioners and say, I want to add this one.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. Right now, for the lead, that would be myself and Brad Brown, ACTEC's lead guy, would like to have a commissioner. I plan on asking Commissioner Winters if he would like to join. Facilities, I've spoken to Mr. Berman and he's open to that. And then also Kevin Hock, the road superintendent. Network, the ACTEC, myself and in particular Josh will be our point man here at the county. Communications, that would just be ACTEC kind of covering that base for us, I believe. Finance, we will have Ian Grumright, Nikki Alves, and Michelle Collins on that. And also, we will, oh, in Communications, we will have Daniel Tagg heading that up. And then Paul is also a great, Paul Hopple will also take part in meetings.
So I, I think there, there may be times that, like on the business side, finance side, maybe the only one can come or whatever, tell her, close together, and same with Paul and with Daniel. Daniel's OEM person, but there's some other things that Paul needs to do, because I think, is that where you're, we're on the same page?
Yeah, that's kind of where we're thinking, we'll have our bases covered that way. So we'll be able to conduct productive conversations without everyone there all of the time.
So...
So who are you going to make a motion?
I, I think we just need concurrence to go ahead and, because of, we'll, we'll, once they get the, this advisory team, or they'll say, has a plan together, then we'll be acting on what they're reporting forward. So I think it just confirms for Melanie to work with ACTEC and pull the team together to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
I, I concur and I like the idea that Melanie's going to clearly state this as the IT Disaster Recovery Plan because there's so many disaster plans out there.
Yeah, it gets very confusing that way. So concurrence?
Yeah.
Go forward, make it happen. Sorry for missing that. Back to a new liaison update.
I'm, I'm not going to have any right at this moment, I mean, well, excuse me. Just a minute, say that. Yet to be finalized, we've all been working tirelessly here in Lake County, as well as in the state, as well as nationally, on our secureable schools payments for our road program, our schools, and the pill payment, which helps fund general government, as well as our contribution for the last five years to our road department based upon full funding and bill. And the short version, because this Congress has to vote on it, they don't know if they'll do it today. They have to by tomorrow on the omnibus bill, but they're no longer in discussions on whether they support it. They support the two-year reauthorization of secureable schools and they support it to pay the back two years, which would be, from what they're saying the years are, it's the payment we would have received only in January of two thousand and seventeen and the payment we just would have received in January.
would have received in January of 2018, to get as current at least. The details on what that payment amount will be are yet forthcoming. They are writing in language so that the secure little schools prior to your payment is noted as qualifying, so that the PIL payment, and I'm not going to try and, I mean, it'd just be too much stuff, but PIL for Lake County was going to be drastically affected if they weren't able to put the language in there that did away with the prior to your payment part of that, not really instead of the federal payments primarily secure little schools. And if they'd have done that, it would probably, by law, have been a straight across the board reduction of a minimum of 30% to all counties, and there's nearly 2,000 counties, I mean, 49 states and three territories that share in or receive PIL payments, and it would have drastically affected many of the smaller population counties, regardless of how much land base they had, way more than it would have the larger population counties that actually would have seen a slight increase. So, that's a key part of that. But in there, I'll just quickly say, and they haven't worked out all the details, they have some very positive forest health, that's been the sticking point in the SRS language. They have some very positive provisions that are going to be moving us forward. Part of it's a ten-year fire borrowing solution, where they're going to fund at least up to a certain level these fires at a greater level through the disaster, probably refunding instead of pouring from all of the project areas that keep us from doing the work that we need to do, to keep the fires, yeah, to keep the fires from being catastrophic in size, severity, and cost. So, that's a good thing. They're reworking the language in secure little schools for Title III, so there'll be some additional ability to use the search and rescue hours a little more effectively. They've recognized that need to do that. They also are doing an amendment or a provision to allow for more categorical exclusion use on some different projects. And there's way more to it, but just as a general update, that's where we're at right at this moment, and they should conclude it either sometime later today. And most of them are home, because when Jonathan called in Sheffield from Aiko, he was at home. They have multiple inches of snow, kind of paralyzing the Beltway.
Really?
Yes. So, anyway.
The call, similar that I received, I was making one return from Walden's office. The call led exactly this same way, and it could be as early as, within the next couple hours, or it could be later on, as we know, sometimes somebody gets on their family and it gets delayed for a few hours.
Yeah, well, there's so many provisions on this bill, but they're still dealing with it, so.
Yep, very good update. Okay, Bert, were, do you want to go now?
Sure.
Or, as, we'll probably take a recess and come back in at 11 for our executive session.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I've got three, I'm very young to live here, but two, three items I'd like to just cover. First one is, two years ago approximately, it was addressed at one of the forums at the railroad crossing on South Third, need some work, and you had commented that funds have been set aside at that time, and it would be repaired soon. I know there's change on the railroad management. So, could you give another update when funds and that's going to be repaired?
Absolutely. You're talking down next to Pacific Power, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Absolutely. We just had a railroad advisory here a couple weeks ago, and our new operator, that is on their list to do this winter time right now.
Yeah.
What they would like to do is to take and eliminate the second set of tracks that go through there, because of that is not the place that, with the regulations, they can't have the storage there. So their plans are is to remove those, take and fix that part there, so there's only one set of tracks going across there, and upgrade that when there asphalt's available and compaction and all those things.
So you think that might be completed by fall?
It should be completed by fall, or that's, there are multiple people, including myself, very interested in that getting done, and it got delayed as we're changing operators.
Yeah. The second issue is on ordinance. First one is the dog ordinance. You've got a fee schedule listed in the dog ordinance, which conflicts with the, your listed fee schedule, the separate fee schedule, which is required by state. Those two, I'd recommend you bring together, and, you know, looking at it ethically, those people that would, that have been overcharged should be offered an opportunity to have a refund if they so desire, but there is a difference, and I'd ask that maybe by the end of April, we, last, that we corrected.
Well, we, I'm not aware of that, so that's information. You're talking...
Melanie, you want to speak to it?
Sure.
Because Bert came and saw me, and we've already chased this down.
After you spoke to Commissioner Shown, I went down to the Corps' office, and I let them know that there is a discrepancy, and they are working to amend that.
Okay, so you think that might be done by April?
Well, I don't know, Bert, but they...
Because it is law, you know.
We took, yeah, we took what you said to heart and immediately acted on it.
Okay, appreciate that.
Yep.
Then, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay. The next ordinance I'd like to discuss with you is Airport Number 15, that ordinance, number 14 Airport. And it states back, or states that you shall have a commission of five people to kind of receive, well, against me, for what their job is. I know for not as managing, it was changed because of prior management, and to a advisory committee, which that has since fallen to the wayside. I recommend that follow the ordinance and go ahead and reinstate a permission of five people, and I have data to support it. I mean, you know, if you'd like to hear my reasoning, I've got that, but I think we can discuss that off on your convenience. But, it is an ordinance, ordinance is the law, and so I recommend that you go ahead and request that to be started, and I'd like to see that, again, done, completed by end of April, where, you know, you can start selecting.
I'll comment on that. I may be wrong, have to research that, but with Mr. Parti was on, and is recommended to the Board, it was, we're supposed to dissolve the commission and that ordinance and go to an advisory, and I thought that ordinance had been dissolved. I don't know if it had or not.
Yeah.
I do know, and I was just going to the website yesterday looking at other ordinance, Bert, we may not have done a good job of dissolving or taking ordinance off. I'll have to research that.
I would...
But your recommendation, if we did dissolve that, is to at least enact an ordinance that would bring a commission back.
Yes. Actually, just update this one, Rob, versus a, have the commission versus a, an advisory. The reason I'm saying that, fast experience, is that the commission obviously is to advise three what's going on.
Well, actually, I think the commission got quite a bit of authority, didn't they?
Yes, that's what I'm, what I'm getting at. And, and I think it would take a lot of load, management load to offer you folks, and, and be able to give you more of a business of what's going on out there. And like I said, if you like, sometimes to your leisure, I can go, why I absolutely feel that this should be done.
Absolutely. If you want to elaborate beyond that, we've got a couple minutes.
Oh, okay.
I'm getting too far into the weeds, but...
Yeah, that's why I wasn't going to hear.
I'm trying to think back, Bert, I'm sitting here thinking off the top of my head, because I haven't read that in a long time, but roughly what was the active responsibility of the commission? They approved budgets and different things, didn't they?
Yeah, it's got it, let me sit right in front of here.
It's interesting how we cycle in government, which we go from, get away from commissions to possibly coming back to them, so it's all, it's all worthy of a goodness case.
Yeah. Yeah, it is...
Well, Commissioner, I think it, I think we need to be a little bit more prepared. We need all three of us here. Dave's here, and Dave's been, you know, I don't want to slight what he's doing, because he's been doing a great job, and I think it's...
You're right, but I don't think it's, it's down to management bit, and that's what I've got right here, that that would take, that shouldn't be Dave's responsibility to try, I don't think. His is more...
Well, I think first, Bert, from my perspective, and this is purely from one Commissioner, I think first we have to decide if we have a management problem.
Well, that's what I've got some data here in the book, I got overnight, and I think that, well, first of all, you've got a law that's not in fault. That's, that's the first one. So, that's where you'd have to decide whether you want to follow this law or resent it.
Well, and we're going to have to find out, as Commissioner Winters said, did we do away with that? We just didn't take it off the books.
Yeah, and then that might be, but as of this morning, or, yeah, your...
Research. And out of respect for what Commissioner Shown has said, I think offline probably is the right discussion, Bert, and let us get some, we need to find out if that ordinance has, if it's still in effect, or where we're at on that. I think that's first and foremost, just as you said also, and then probably need individually start with the airport liaison and the airport manager, and if it's something that looks like it's the direction we should go.
And quickly, I can go over some of these things. The power bill, and this goes back to 2006, has been up and down. Seventeen is the only year that it dropped considerably, that it had been gradually going up. Why? You know, those are where the management things come in, which, you know, may be by, don't know, but that's where detail gets in. And like I said, these are things that Dave's not going, I don't think would have time to do. Power bill, let's see, sewer, which is the water, it has been up and down, but that, there's been some repairs, so it's really not a good management. Why, why is the water bill been going up a little bit? Garbage is a big one. It has gone from no garbage bill up until, what records I'll say, get hold of, into 15, the garbage bill started to be charged out there. And it was considerable high, somewhere around a hundred and some dollars at the time, maybe not that much, but anyway, I've got all that here. Anyway, relatively high garbage bill. Why the cost for garbage at that rate, when the normal can is roughly around $40 a month? It succeeded that considerably. Why? Those are things that people should know, so it should be answered. Advertising, that was, when that contract was initially set up, there was just so much money set aside for advertising. I could not find any, excuse me, record of any advertising being paid for other than, when it was trying to find somebody to manage the airport. Those are just a couple of statements, and so, that gets down to management. And, oh, fuel, fuel saves, that was the big one. They held pretty much constant. You know, ups and downs a little bit based on fire season, but it's not broken out, it's broken, it's straight fuel saves. It's not broken out by Jet A or 100. And the reason I think that's important is if Jet A's going up and 100's going down, especially during the summer, when 100 loadable lead aircraft are doing mostly fun, if it's dropping, that means we're not getting customers in that stop to get fuel, which in turn, some of them are going to come to town to send in either restaurants. I feel that should be broken out and monitored, what's happening on each category of fuel, and the alliance of why, what's going on, and what, if they're both dropping at different times, like a jet fuel's only big sales is through the summer fire season, okay, what do we need to do in the winter to get jet fuel saves up? Or 100 loadlet is dropping in the summer when it should be higher, what's going on? Are we not advertising right, or what's, what is going on? And those are things in management that I feel that need to be looked at. And I just don't feel you'd have the time here in the court house, and, but you folks are Dave, I just don't think you have that kind of time where a advisory committee could be just like with the railroad and all your other advisory committees, how they, what they provide to you.
Okay, I have a lot of questions in my head. I'll wait, visit with y'all offline on some of those, some of those, Bert. What we want is, where I believe we're at, on most all of airport, I'm not saying that there can't be some things done better, but it is a tool to attract people to Lake County.
Absolutely.
And we have worked hard, I'll speak for myself and Mr. Berman, on giving grants and other things, and we've done so many improvements out there. We have a 1944 or older naval base that has deferred maintenance. The Board of Commissioners has done open request and put dollars in there. Fifty years of deferred maintenance isn't going to be taken care of.
Exactly, and when I was managing, I couldn't get money because it wasn't available.
There wasn't been that available then, so, and I'm sensitive and appreciative of some things you bring forward. I'm also very prideful of all we've got done, and we don't hear the positives on that that much from a lot of people, as hard as a lot of our people work on that, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so...
And I know you acknowledge some of those out there, Bert, there's been close $7 million put into that place, and it's, and there's, that's the big ones, and there's a lot of other things. Right now, I just got two different grants today for him to apply for, trying to address the water, trying to address the generator back that out here. We're working on a lot of things, and we probably don't oversize or talk about them enough.
Well, sure, and but, you know, and these are all things to consider, and it's that stuff that advisory committee could help you out, and that's where you have to make that decision. How, how does the advisory committee for the other areas, how do they, what help do they provide?
Oh, you're promoting a commission. We only have advisories in the railroad.
Well, I'm commissioning.
The whole other commission that we have is the planning commissioners, and you're promoting a commission.
In the railroad, they commission?
No, the railroad advisory. At the same time, Mr. Parti promoted those to become advisories in Board of Commissioners, we accepted those proposals, and we acted on them, during those times whenever all of a sudden there's a mystery system and managing those different ones. So, at the time, we believe those were the appropriate decisions made, that was brought forward to us as a board at that time. So, this one here, I'm willing to research it and look into it.
Okay, sounds good. And like I said, any time you want to talk offline, I'm going to, a little more reasoning why I feel that way.
We're going to take a break. We got 11 o'clock, thank you, Bert. We got eleven o'clock, thank you, Bert.